For what size building you talking about having a bill?
Figure your couple of truck bays and then if we do go, what the sheriff talked about, you know, down the line where we're gonna, we get a mechanic where we service all the vehicles that the county owns and stuff, we'll get a bay where they bring them in and we'll add, you know, everything, but be there to service the equipment and stuff. Office space, we got three offices right now with that, lunchroom, bathroom with maybe some showers for the guys.
You don't, don't you think we could probably use 10 acres? I think I would buy it. Yeah, I like, I like so much.
You wanna, you wanna budget, why don't we just budget $500,000, just like we did with EMS, let's see if we can, Jeff, if we, $500,000? That would be land, that'd be about 150 for land at 315. Uh huh. What do you think? If we budget half a million dollars. Y'all wanna do that? We need a road bridge department, $500,000?
$500,000.
And, and you know, at least you have it to play with and if you don't need it.
Okay, the courthouse emergency foundation repairs that we're hoping THC issues final approval to match half, we're estimating the county's portion is $496,000. Are we taking that out of the bond monies or are we doing that out of county?
It should come up.
Go down three more pages to the waste recycle facility.
That's James.
Yes. He had mentioned yesterday when he was in the office, the possibility of a used backhoe for out there to move around this trash and be able to compact the compacters before the compacters compact the compacters. And he had estimated 20,000, not more than that. Do y'all want to put that in there or do you want to hold up till he's here and has further explanation?
No, I think put it in there.
Put it in there because in case he doesn't, I don't know where he said.
That compactor actually does not compact anything, it just kinda pushes it.
Okay, now skip down three more pages and we're at the constables. They had requested some training dollars, some of the constables still have remaining LEOC monies. My suggestion is if the individual constable has LEOC monies, that they use those for training before we actually start budgeting county dollars for that. Those are state funds that will cut this last biennium, that will no longer be available. Constable three has quite a bit of LEOC monies available that can be utilized and Constable four does also. Constables two and four had requested digital cameras, two different kinds of digital cameras. The one that Constable two requested is actually a dash mount for a approximate cost of, I think it's $2,200, $2,000. Constable fours is a portable camera that they can also attach on their shoulder, so if they're out arresting someone or that it can be filming also, they don't have to be in the proximity of the vehicle. And that estimated cost was $1,230. My question to the court is, do we want to honor the request of each individual or do we want to have them both have the same thing? My thoughts, just from reading the information that was given, that the portable one that they can attach to themselves, if they're away from their vehicle, things can still be filmed, which would be good documentation.
I like that idea, but what if they don't know how to, I mean, you know, some people don't like the technology part of that.
Well, you're looking at Constable two and four who are, which is Donald and Fernando, which they are very.
Do they like to do that kinda stuff? As long as they like to do it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with you, I like it where you can, you can see what they're seeing.
Just, just when I looked at the information and also, I think the one that's portable, for $1,230, I think is reasonable.
That would be for all four of them, right? All four of them would give.
Just two of them requested.
Two of them requested, two of them.
Yeah, but if Donald doesn't want, he doesn't want the portable one.
Well, I don't know that he even looked at that, if he had access to that information, if he was just looking specific to a vehicle and didn't realize there was a portable one, I don't know.
I'd like to ask Dennis and Fernando too.
Put that on your to-do list.
Okay, because, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get two of them something and I'll give the other two of them something.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure, Donald's pretty sharp, if he, if he wanted a dash cameras, that's what he, that's what he wants, he knows there's a shoulder mounted one out there, that's not what he wants.
I say they put in there what they want.
That's right.
Put in there what they want, even the other two that didn't ask for anything.
They don't want.
All righty. All right, we'll go down that road, there we are, they got what they want.
Okay, now skip down to DPS. They had requested changing the part-time clerk to full-time, which I calculated, that would not include a 3% salary increase because starting pay rate for full-timers is $10 an hour. That's a dollar an hour raise for that position. It also requested, as you'll see listed at the bottom, printers, computers, copier or printer. It also requested that the county supply a water cooler for the weigh station. The county cannot do that, and I don't have the statute in front of me.
Right, no.
Because it is not benefiting the taxpayers of the county. They can supply their own water, but we went through this a couple of years ago, each building used to have water coolers.
We got one, we first got here on it in January of '11.
That was discontinued. Now, the juvenile department still has one, but they pay for that out of their supervisory fees, so that's not county monies, that's okay.
And that's water for the juvenile.
Correct. And they had also requested a compact refrigerator as part of their office equipment requests. I don't know what the court wants to do as far as that's concerned, but as far as the water itself, we can't do that.
Well, if you can't get no water, you don't serve a bad refrigerator, you can put no refrigerator in there.
Okay, is that the consensus?
Y'all wanna give a refrigerator?
They were there like three days.
I think we should get them a refrigerator.
A little one?
It comes in range.
Well, if a little one's $200 and one this big is $300, $300. And, and if you're not gonna give them a water machine, a dispenser, they need something a little bit bigger to put their bottle of water in, so.
Cause it's hot out there.
I'm in line with them, you know, what is a refrigerator cost? One that's about five foot, I mean, not a big one.
What's that you tell me you want it, once you get on the phone?
Five, six hundred dollars.
It's maybe about 600.
About 600. I'd say put 600 in there for a mid-sized refrigerator.
Is the, their adequate space in the building for that with everything else they had out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
They could get one.
We gotta have a cooler.
There's that water cooler facing.
Make sure you tell them that you give a cooler.
We wanna take care of EMS and law enforcement.
That's the two main points.
Okay, the next is the health department, that includes our mandatory county doctor. The last two or three times there have been increases in pay, that position as well as the doctor under the EMS department had not received that. I did calculate it in here, this time, does the court want to use that or not use that? Basically $108 a year more for salary.
I think leave it in there.
Okay, the next one is the county welfare department, that includes our contribution for the mobile food pantry at $24,000. Is that a desired continuing expense? Has there been positive feedback from the people that are benefiting from that?
I think so. I wanna leave it, I don't agree to it, I think it's very good and kind of high turnout.
Okay, the next one is the historical commission. For the last 12 years, they have received $10,000 per year towards our operating budget. The request this year came in at $18,000 for the historical commission. The county has also in the past contributed to the historical society in the amount of $500 or it's vice versa. The 18,000 is for the society, the 500 is for the commission. Mr. Ruckman explained that they have higher operating costs with all the historical operations out at Helena, they prefer to have the $18,000 and not receive anything towards the commission this year.
The commission usually $500 a month?
They want $8,000, give up $500.
Good math, right? I like that. So do we want to honor their request?
That would be nice. Well, if you read their report, they did get it all at least, they spend it all on Ruckman House out there, etc., if they want us to pick up all that more expense, so.
Yeah, but they got $700.
Well, for tourists in the future, I know the county's growing and we do have a lot of things here that have historical value, which is, they're kinda fortunate to not only have the opportunity to fund these things, but to have the people to work, as many people do, to preserve our.
Carl, I totally agree with you, I just think that an 80% increase after $100 is a lot to ask for, because then soil and water ask for it, and that's just as important as anything else. And I don't, I don't wanna give one person an 80% increase and then deny somebody else a 20% increase, and we've done some of that type of stuff. I mean, I don't mind giving them an increase, but I think $8,000 one year is an awful lot. That's almost doubling what we've been doing with the operating expenses.
That's kinda the way I look at it, $8,000.
And we can give them a little more each and every year as it goes along, but just to give them that one hump is just a lot at one time.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's what, what hasn't happened is we haven't asked for an increase in, I think, probably 10 years, and it was two or three years ago that we were actually cut from $12,000 to $10,000.
Cut from what?
It used to be $12,000, and during one of the cuts, it went from $12,000 to $10,000. So it hasn't been just small increases, over the past, what, 12, 15 years, we haven't received an increase at all. This only reflects the very basics of the ongoing expenses of maintaining the museum that is, you know, visited by, by many tourists and, you know, schoolchildren. And we do need to work, we have the same capital requirements to upgrade the buildings as you all do, so we're kinda looking at this as a community, a county effort to all work together so that we have a nice place for our visitors to go and visit, and it is something that we should all work to be proud of and work together on it. So we're just asking for this amount of help so that we can have that on an ongoing basis and then also focus on the maintenance of the buildings that are out there, cause we have a lot of work to do to make it an area that we're proud of, cause this, the buildings are in bad shape and we're trying to focus there. So we would appreciate it, but it has been many years since we asked for an increase.
Maybe we could put them back to the, give them back the 12 that they had before and give them a little bump.
I would be willing to give them back to what they had, and I, I think that the $12,000 would be okay, but just in the last year have we been able to meet our MHMR needs in Karnes County, and we have people going without mental health help and everything else, and we're just now meeting those needs, and so we gotta take into account everybody. I'm only giving their $2,000 back, and we can work as we go, give everybody what they need, but let's meet those, we got a lot of people that are, that are going without in Karnes County, and, and I think that we need to turn some of that back and give some of that back, like through MHMR and the Food Bank and stuff like that, and I'm only giving their $2,000 back if they were cut. And then we can bump it up as we go along.
Yeah, I think $100 increase is, is reasonable. Would you make them make more later?
That'd be okay soon, we keep working together to try to get it back up there.
We do wanna work together, yeah.
Okay, the next one is the agricultural extension or AgriLife department. Figures on the far right are the recommended amounts, the only ones that are down from what we requested, the telephone expense that requested 2,500, but again, if you worked out based on the cost to date and what they anticipated is for the rest of the year would be 2,000, so I recommend 2,100 for that line item. The out-of-county travel, based on what has been spent for the ag agent, it would equate out to 1,368. For the actual expenses for this fiscal year, the request is 2,000, so I did a medium adjustment of 1,700. J.D. is here, he may need to defend that or...
I kept it down to a minimum, one time I drive home from one of these events like San Antonio, I go back and forth. I thought about getting a room up there because fuel costs are, are going up, it saves me a little bit as well, but it's nice to be able to come home sleeping in your own bed, but that's the only place where my, my travel would probably go up very much out of the room then. I normally don't charge a penny for meals, I feel like I'm being eaten at home anyway, so I, you know, I don't charge for that, is what, so that's probably my own legality, I don't know, maybe that's fair, maybe that's normal, I don't know, but that's how I would bet, 1,700 would probably be fine.
You think that would make it or?
I think it would make it, I mean, I, I, you know, I'd have to look and see, maybe this, I might try getting a room, you know, getting a room for two weeks in San Antonio is, waiting for 10 days in San Antonio, might kinda push that to the very limit, but we just might have to look and see, try it out.
The county pickup that he has in his departments comes from Roden Bridge, that pickup was given to him by Commissioner Ford. Last, I've been changing all of the truck for him, we also put the tires on that truck, I think y'all need to think of a budget for him to take it.
Maintenance?
Truck, maybe you go maintenance.
How much, um, what kinda truck is that?
2008, right, Jeffrey?
Sir?
2008 F-150.
Yes.
How much do you need for maintenance? How bad are your tires? You need new tires.
Yeah, we put a set of tires on that pickup real well, like mid-summer.
Of this year?
Yes, well, the tires have lasted about a year, but he'll be needing another set of tires and then all changes, your six-horse haul plus the, all the filters and stuff.
Plus some safety stuff. I think it's supposed to be easy.
A 316, 100, 1000.
And then some breakdown, they could try a little time or break down, then recover and all that, that's good.
$2,000?
Yeah.
$2,000. And if something happens, J.D., that doesn't cover it, since for you, we're all, you know, you can't help having a blowout, you can't have, you know, come back and tell us, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
If you wanna.
Okay, skip down two to LEPC or Emergency Management.
I have one question.
Okay.
I got this deal with the citizens of New York, are we not gonna give them rates?
Well, when we left the other day, I was told to calculate 3% across the board, so that's what I did.
I'm not, I don't want rates.
Look, I don't have any oil wells.
I don't get it. Wait until we get a real.
James is not here.
What does it, it don't matter, we all, I just said, all along, we all been saying we weren't gonna take rates.
I'm thinking about the new commissioner coming in, I don't know, you spoke about this other.
Okay, so I heard two out of three assistance.
Well, we need to wait and get some in, put some James, I guess, just leaving in there, I guess, right there.
Who's James?
I don't know, cause he was in my office just after five and he was gonna be there.
Yeah, I mean, I called him yesterday, I hope he's okay.
Okay, Emergency Management, I talked to Shelby yesterday and we combined training and conference into one line item for $2,000, and what he did say is he just wants to make sure that the microwave project is funded at the $38,296 as Chief DeBose presented in the budget workshop, and if that is done, that should get us up to par for quite a bit into the future.
Can I tell you what, when we needed that Emergency Management that night, the sheriff had some issues, that thing worked very nicely.
The, the one thing that we've tried to concentrate on basically, everything's been going through grants, and we've got the communication system for the sheriff and all DPS, everybody, we've got it up to grade, we're, we're digital, basically, we're, we're there, and it scares us because we got there so fast, and it's, I'm glad we did. The sheriff's has got digital radios in their cars now and through grants and a lot of stuff has happened. The, the microwave project is, when we first came in, that was all, first part was set up by grants, the second part now is that with all the people that, and communication has come in, the band for the communication with has gotten to the point where we have to go someplace else to get off everybody else's traffic, their radio traffic, so this is what we're doing. And usually the money I have left over, I usually put extra money in for communications, and that's strictly because what we've obtained by grants has had to be repaired from time to time, so I've been picking that up out of my, out of my budget because of the stuff that I got through grants, so I feel it's only right to be the child repair, so that's what we've been doing. I told one I'd put in 15,000, I think we should probably go down to 10, I really don't wanna even cut that, but if we have to, we will, because, you know, I'm just trying to do what we can, and what's left over each year from the budget goes into another account, right, Juan?
No, it stays in the Emergency Management.
But, I mean, but it's excess, if we ever have a, if we ever have a catastrophe for, or something happens within the county, we will have some extra funds that we can, we can draw on to manage, manage the event, because when there is an event, cause being everybody shows up to help, there's gonna be money that's going out to replace these guys that are coming in, to pay for a lot of stuff, so, that's one thing we try to do. Other than that, I've got, I've got, there's 21 annexes, there's a much management plan that we're working on, I've got 17 more to finish for next year, and then we'll be through with the, they'll be good for five years then. And whatever happens after, somewhere's down the line, I've said this every year, somewhere's down the line, you're gonna have to end up probably looking at providing a full-time Emergency Manager. It's coming, it's there, and Eagle Ford is pushing it even quicker, and that's not gonna be a very cheap deal once you start setting up an office with somebody to work with and all kinds of equipment, but nevertheless, that'll, that's something that I ask too, after, we'll see what happens after the first of the year, but I want to make sure that salary stays in there for whoever or whatever it does.
Thank you, Shelby.
You gonna do EMS yet?
No, we haven't done EMS yet.
I need to get back.
Because I was waiting some information from Johnny before.
That's okay, we have more budget questions. Are you gonna go back to work?
Yeah, I need to get back, I got committing and stuff, but one thing about EMS, and I've talked to Johnny about it and he has never had said yes or no, I'm involved, I, I believe in saving your backs, and, you know, some people we lift are pretty darn heavy, and Stryker's got a new stretcher now that's a battery-powered thing that raises up and comes down, and I have asked Johnny to look at, see if she could get a price on a demonstrator model or something like that, so I don't know if he's ever talked to y'all about it or not, but that's something I think that somewhere's down the line, we need to start looking at.
Will you ask Johnny to make sure that that's on?
Yeah, that sounds like a good deal for him, I've hurt my back and I know he probably has.
But I think Johnny's probably have that in his, you know, departmental budget, so we can look at it for him.
And by the way, the new ambulance is a dream, I'll, I'll thank y'all for that, cause it's, it's day of the art.
All right, Shelby, thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful.
Okay, the next one is the county library, I talked to Dixie yesterday afternoon and she polled her board members, and they would like to move the Karn City and Kennedy Assistant Librarians to full-time positions with benefits. I have calculated in the 3% salary increases, and I will remind you that their county library board did approve 10% salary increases to draw them closer in line with surrounding libraries. Dixie, is there anything you wanna add?
Well, I just was wondering how you came to the 3% increase, I know in the past, at a time when the county did not have all of this wonderful oil industry, most of the time the salary increases were 5% at least, and I'm wondering why now at a time when we've got the funding that the employees are the ones, again, actually, you know, being asked to sacrifice at a 3%.
I think one of the things that we got into Dixie is we gave such big raises last year, I mean, we're gonna have to give it in little humps to make sure.
To some, but not to everybody.
Well, it was $200 straight across the board, even that was a pretty big sum.
Well, actually, I didn't get a $200 salary increase, because mine has to be figured as an hourly increase based on what Kennedy and Karn City get, because they have the, the longer hours open, so Fall City and Runge has to go by what their hourly wage comes out to, so I didn't actually get a $200 a year increase. That's fine, that's fine, but I just wondered how you came upon the 3% salary increase this year.
Where are they on this sheet you want it?
On the sheet I gave you the first thing?
It's on the back end one.
Right.
And I would also ask that the position of the county director be left at the rate of salary that it is, it is sufficient for the job discretion.
What's that one, Dixie, what are you saying?
The county director's salary. With the 20-hour-per-week position.
I think where a lot of the discussion about the raises from last year comes into play, because I've heard it, is the fact that, yes, it was basically $2,400 across year, across the board for the year for all office positions, but you have some employees in Roden Bridge that got an $8,000 a year raise, you have constables that got $6,000 a year each for travel, you have people in the sheriff's department that got $4,000 minimum, up to $6,000 increases, that's where your discrepancies are coming in with the discussions, when the comments are made that it was $200 across the board last year.
And I think one of the problems we had last year, the sheriff and Jeffrey were the only two that were able to keep employees, and so we were trying to be comparable there, and I can fix what we did last year.
Well, I understand that, but there will be further discussion about that when we get to those departments because of the surrounding areas, what they are paying in those departments, and we are well above those rates now for similar positions.
Sheriff asked us the county, $76,000.
I'm not talking about the sheriff, I'm talking about employees.
Oh, they're gonna say we ain't gonna be paying the sheriffs. So what do you mean, what employees, Roden Bridge employees?
Roden Bridge employees and sheriff's deputies, we are at the high or above other surrounding counties right now on our starting pays.
Good, maybe we can get some deputies.
We do have deputies now.
And I just also would like to comment that the Runge board members did have questions and concerns that just because Fall City and Runge's assistants are only 30 hours per week, they're not being considered as loyal employees, so I have to bring that to you, that was their concern. I will tell you that Fall City was in favor of letting Kennedy and Karn Cities be raised to 40 hours per week with benefits.
Along those two positions in discussion, do we make them full-time with benefits?
What two positions?
The Assistant Librarian in Kennedy and the Assistant Librarian in Karn City.
They're only two hours short, and I think that's what causes the problem, there's a big difference between keeping somebody part-time that's actually part-time and then just keeping them part-time just to withhold benefits, and I think those two, two hours per week. And I think those two two-hour positions, they were just keeping them part-time to withhold benefits. A, you know, we were trying to fumble one along, just like we didn't.
My question is, do I add the two hours and the benefits?
Hard to tell my assistant? Not anything. That's fair, I agree with you. I don't think, you know, I would not take that away from them on anything, but just consider, my assistant's been with me going on 13 years. And the other ones have been in Rungy for, I think, going on four years. So their loyalty has to count a little bit as well. Just consider that in future discussions. And I'm sure there's other part-timers in other departments that have been there for a while as well. So we can't forget about those.
Okay, the next one is the courthouse security. All I did was change the rate of pay based on the 3% increase for bailiff at 250 hours. That's all that's paid out of that fund annually right now. Should there ever be the desire to make any type of security at the annex or the courthouse when it is completed and reoccupied, that's where monies can come from for that also. Now, sheriff's department. Back to the discussion about increases in salary, because in the last two and a half months, I have received lots of discussion, my office is that lately, or all the time. The, as I showed y'all when we first started, the increases in the sheriff's department for regular deputies and jailer dispatchers was $4,000 for the year last year. In Goliad County, the starting pay rate for a deputy is $27,560, 1325 an hour, where the starting pay rate for a deputy in Karns County right now is 1572. And proposed with the 3% increase for 2013 is 1620. So look at your large difference there. In Wilson County, deputy's starting pay is 1298 per hour. Again, Karns County is 1572. In B County, starting pay rate is 1305 per hour. Again, Karns County's is 1572. So their raises that they received last year put them over and above the surrounding areas.
And I have not had a very big turnover either. Thank y'all. I've got people here to stay with, and I think I've lost two people since this started last October. So, and I was moving through five and six a year. So, we're there, jolting in there, going on, getting raises on their people, so is Jolt Albert. Me talking on the radio, got very buzzing, his commissioners jumped up, they can't keep people down there, they're jumping up to get to our level right now. We just lead the pack, but force that y'all seen, they asking for more deputies, they asking for more equipment, they're in the same situation we're in. And time to get a person trained, and you're gonna go to somebody else for another $3,000, $2,000, we're here, we are here. We don't have to worry about, you know, looking for something, doing this, because we're here. I asked for 5% because that's what I was supposed to do. I am the boss, I want to keep my people. I asked for 5%, except for y'all, y'all asked for three, I asked for five, because I want to keep my people. But I ain't gonna cut my budget, you know, I'm not gonna be here after December 31st. I'm not gonna be like the other sheriffs here. You know, cut me $100,000, jack me up, bought it for, you know, nine months, it was nothing. And some of the commissioners are still here, or in this room right now, that did that to me. But I'm not gonna do that, I'm not that kind of person. I have to think about the welfare of Karns County and their public safety. So that's why I'm here today, my budget pretty much stays the same. I'm just moving, I'm not cutting no deputies, I'm moving some positions around. Basically, all I did, I deleted a couple of positions, because the people are not gonna be here. Simple.
What positions did you delete?
Narcotic and license and weight positions. I made them regular deputies at $32,707, which they're making more money than any surrounding areas right now, because of what y'all did. Because Jeremy said he's not gonna be here, and that's basically what it is.
And then he also requests two additional full-time jailer dispatchers.
And that's, that's a big one right now. We're running, I know the JP's been up here talking about how many people we run through the jail, we run a lot of people through the jail as of. I done my money yesterday, I was trying to get Luana, give her some money, I brought in almost $14,000 in less than 15 days. That's people that got out of jail. This ain't the people that still in jail. So I asked for more, at least two more positions, because my jail administrator is also a dispatcher to jail. So I've gotta have at least two positions, because I gotta have a roving person right now, so I asked for two more jailer dispatchers. And that's not way out beyond anything, because the paperwork is just horrendous right now. But we leave so many people, 14, 15 people a weekend through that 12-bit jail. Thank y'all again for giving me the money to fix that. So. And that's what I asked for two new Tahoe. You have a fleet of 12 with this one, I think 11, 12 new vehicles. You should be good for another three to four years, we won't have to do this no more for a while. I'm asking, you know, over the past, until the February, and y'all gave me the half million dollars, you know, I asked to equip them, I've been doing that out of a seed fund that I had from abandoned illegal alien vehicles, which I'm asking instead of $52,000, some other dollar, I'm asking for $62,000 to equip them with cameras, radios, cages, stuff of this nature. And that's, basically, I would have one older model pickup, which is 2008, I had this 2011 Ford pickup I got, and I think I have one Crown Vic left. And you have a brand-new fleet, a brand spanking new fleet here. Y'all don't have to do nothing to for a long, unless it wreck out. Simple. And what else, I'm gonna ask you to go up on some things.
Y'all have the, I gave you his request that he wrote time before last, this that I've done today, I've compiled on basing it on estimated actual expenditures and increasing based on that, and/or decreasing. David had decreased the detention expense. Currently, the budget's at $50,000, he had reduced it to $20,000.
It could be a whole 12 cells living there.
We got all 12 cells, I got extra five beds in the detox, which we're using, we got grunts. We've got 30 beds at GEO right now, we can get by very well. Like I said, I talked to Dr. D the other day, we're working good on that still. When you get the new jail picked up, you're gonna be thinking about PAs, commissary, and all a bunch of stuff like that, but right now, we can get by with this, because detention, the only thing I'm having trouble with right now is still females, but now I can keep them in our jail. And that, we still move a lot of females to our jail.
On the second page, under prisoner care and medical, the current budget was at $2,000. You will notice that the recommended is up to $29,000, and that is mainly due to the fact that we have Dr. Deseguera to handle all the issues at the GEO at $2,250 per month, irregardless of the number of inmates that we have there.
That's working out perfect.
It is.
And we're not gonna get it any cheaper, and we're gonna have EMS running back and forth, we need EMS to be out here taking care of our people.
Then you go down about halfway on that same page, under computer expense. The current budget is $67,150. That included the transition to Hill Country.
Right.
Our normal expense is $20,000 for computer expense, we are able to reduce that, my recommendation is to $11,000 this year, based on $6,000 annual support, plus I put in there $5,000 for possible upgrades on computers.
I need two new computer for the deputy's office, because we've got older ones there, they're probably five, six years old, they're wore out. So basically what it is. I think we, how about the office equipment, Luana? I think I put down some office equipment down here too.
I included that in the office expense, David.
Okay, we're there.
Yeah, I have the explanation.
And we still, on gas and stuff, I think I put down, what, $110,000?
You put down $110, I think.
Right.
But I reduced it to 95 based on what the expenses are to date and what the estimated actual for the year is, should come out to $80,191.
Okay.
And so, instead of the $110, I did it down to 95.
So I was working off, I think, $375 a gallon or something like that, I was trying to get there on $375 a gallon. Okay.
The departmental expenses, the current budget right now is $32,999, where the original budget was 15, but when you amended for the half million plus in January, that included shotguns, pistols, vests, et cetera, so therefore, that's why there's that reduction in that line item also, because those are all already onboard, and we don't need to spend for them.
Pretty much on top of all this right now, I think we're sitting on 18 deputies, which is, like I said, I've lost two over the last, since October 1st, almost a year. And that's, one was a reason, personal issues, and the other one was a reason, personal issues, so.
Okay, what's currently in the budget right now, David?
What?
Is 14 deputies, plus your sergeant, plus your chief deputy, so that's 16 positions.
But we did, did you add that narcotics?
That includes those two in here, yeah.
And we're gonna need those positions, I mean, whoever comes in here is gonna need them.
Yeah, why were we taking out narcotics and license and weight?
Well, license and weight, I don't have nobody right there at license and weight, I talked to a couple of people, and they wasn't gonna work the 36. I can get a deputy, and working with Austin Martinez, he's gonna be training my people, he's lieutenant, so I can get a license and weight person for $32,707 right now, and he's gonna be a deputy. That's just it, because there's nobody.
The task force, they're gonna come here?
They're gonna be here, I talked to Austin this while ago, I know Pete talked, I just talked to Austin a while ago, they're gonna be here every month.
And they called me, they need that money.
And we're still trying to get that motel funds, and I mean.
It's gonna get going.
We gotta get that going, but that's what, that's where we at right now.
And just for clarification, we're doing a budget workshop on the motel funds?
No.
I think that it had come up at one point in time, something about, was it going to be $79, was the state gonna pay the $79? And then, whatever. Okay, when Brian gave me the paper, and I had it in this budget workshop folder, and I don't remember where I put it, they had requested the full amount, not just the $79. Because other troopers that were going other places, that were not being able to get this kind of stuff, that they were trying to use that money there, and they're so short, and some of the oil field companies said they didn't care, they said as long as Luana was writing a check directly to the hotel, they didn't care how much it was for, if it was their money, and we were using it for public safety, and Luana was just taking a check straight from Karns County to a hotel, that Luana could, and whatever that hotel building, they did not need.
So this is what we're talking about, a line budget item in Luana's office?
No. It's a special fund, and once they come in with the checks, she'll set it up.
Okay. Yeah, I talked, I talked to a lot of all companies, just like you have, and they, they wanna help out, they're just, we're just trying to figure out how to do that.
No, well, we already have it, I mean, they, they're dying to get down here with their checks and whatnot, and they wanna come at a regular meeting.
Right. Okay. Good. That's great, because like I said, Austin and all the guys have a way for them to.
Just to be clarified, I want to be saying, well, we're just paying over the $79, or we're gonna, they're saying they don't care what it is, as long as it, as long as Luana's writing the check, they trust her.
Well, right now, everybody's driving to San Antonio Southwest side, getting $79, so they, they spend an hour, hour and a half on the road for it to get down here. What else we got, Luana?
Who's next? It's up to you right now, sir.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, next is Roden Bridge. You don't have a itemized deal on that yet. Time crunches came into play. I will go back to the discussion about raises last year, though. You had them ranging from $2,400 a year in that department to over $8,000 per year. Dewitt County's rate currently on their Roden Bridge employees, which they are involved in the Eagle Ford Shell also. Their operators' entry rate is $1,356 a year. After one year, $1,399, after two years, $1,442, after five years, $1,485, after 10 years, And the operators within Roden Bridge right now are $13 and $14, there's one at 12. So they're in line with Dewitt's operators, and the requests for those positions salary-wise are ranging from $16 to $17 an hour. The foreman in Dewitt County range from $1,414 at entry per hour to $1,586 per hour, and the request for the foreman this year is $18 an hour. Currently, they range from $12 to $15 an hour.
I think we were looking at a straight 3% for everybody, weren't we?
Well, when we left out of here at the last meeting, you said, "Give Jeff what he requested," so that's why I calculated.
And the number of people. I didn't mention.
Well, that's, that's another issue too.
I mean, if he needs people to work, or.
14 more people actually needed in the department?
I think we were at a lifetime.
I mean, that's at a tune of $386,880, not including fringe, that's just the salaries. Are 14 people needed.
Because I know Carl asked the question, what did you ask Carl, how many were in each precinct?
There was a maximum of 20 employees in Roden Bridge when it was precinct system.
How many do you have now, Joe, Jeff, sorry, sorry, sorry.
We just lost two, lost one last week, and we lost one today, so we're down, we're down to four.
There was 20 when we were a precinct system.
But just because he's lost them doesn't mean they aren't in the budget.
How many do you have in the budget?
27.
Right now?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, counting Jeff, 19, counting Priscilla.
So you're running at the same thing that the precinct commissioners were before Eagle Ford Shell. I mean, Jeff's getting beat up over these roads, I think we need to give him the people. I'm not saying to give him the $16 an hour, but I think we need to give him the people. How do you keep up with these rates?
How do you let the citizens of County know you're serious and help fix the roads? The only way to do that is give them the manpower, give them the money, and give them the machinery, and let them fix the roads.
All right, the way I read, he's asking almost, the way I read his request, he's asking almost $6,000 increase in for each employee down there. I think that's a little excessive, but, you know, the way he asked for it. I may not agree with you, right? But you don't have to start counting so much, you have so much increase. Is that what you intend, giving that top favor that you have in?
No, sir, no, if they are on a bottom hole, just giving them a rate where, you know, what we're trying to do is set up a deal where if they got something to look forward to, you know, make them increase, but we wouldn't give them that increase all the way, they have to earn it.
From a budgetary standpoint, to implement a salary step that is discretionary would be almost impossible, because it would have to be budgeted at the top dollar for the full year, irregardless whether he paid it or not, because there's no way for me to budget a dollar an hour raise if he's gonna give it to one employee in December and not the other employee until May. And because when I do this budget on salaries in fringe, I do it exact by the pay rate for the full year. Sheriff's Department, I implement that step if they're do it, based on six months, based on a year. That's why this budget is so tedious to calculate for me. And I don't think y'all understand that, but to, I don't argue with a salary step schedule, but it only needs to be implemented annually, October 1st of every year, not, there's no way to budget a possible $2, $1, $0.25. Exactly, and you don't know when.
That's exactly what I'm saying, the way I read his, you have to budget at the top, we can't budget that.
Well, and like you said, Pete, just those requests, if you did them at what he requested for the employees, not in, even considering a step raise within the year, again, your increases are varying from $3,500 a year to $12,480 per year for one employee.
Yeah, so we can't go with what, that's actually what I saw, Jeffrey, it has to be something.
Even if they stay at the rates of pay they're at right now?
I'm just trying to hang on to employees, is what I'm trying to do.
I understand that, but it has to be more defined, the salary, we just can't put that top dollar there and budget it.
Well, if he doesn't use it, what happens?
It stays there.
Yeah.
But then, Carl, realistically. But then, Carl, realistically, you think that the employers aren't going to pressure him and say, well, you busted him at that. I'm busting myself at that. If he wants to keep him, he'll go ahead and give him that full raise?
Well, I know people sitting on the court said, we can't compete, but we are. We're having to. I just don't know what we're going to do.
Are y'all going to march?
No, we've heard enough. Carl, we can't compete, but we can't pay the top dollar.
We can't expect the taxpayers to pay that money.
We can't do that.
But also, I mean, I keep hearing all this, knowing that these oilfield guys are making...
Different deal.
I mean, we got the national, I mean, we got the averages for what everybody's making in Kearns County, and I think the average wage per week is 700 dollars a week. I think they're already paid for.
Well, we don't make that, do we, Bob?
You might want to request a raise, Carl. So, anyway, I think what the, I think what the issue is, is if we do 3 percent, and we're saying we're being fair, it's going to be 3 percent for the Roden Bridge guys, too. I mean, but it's just like Sheriff said. Your sheriff come in, he needs deputy, he needs people, he needs to be able to keep them. He needs to get people somewhere. I mean...
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with the court cutting the licensing weight deputy, and I don't agree with the court cutting narcotics officer. We don't need drugs, and we don't need over 100 patrols.
No, we don't, but if he's got people cross-training people right now, let him cross-train them.
I understand that, but we're tying our hands up. We don't like to fish a coin.
I think he's giving him room to hire deputies, just like he's trying to do himself. I don't, I mean, you're giving them raises, you're giving them everything. We're not trying to cut anything.
Well, from what I can gather, trucks are tearing up our roads, they're killing our citizens, and why we wouldn't want a full-time licensing weight stripper here, working every day. You tell me why not?
Sheriff, what was your reasoning?
Mr. Deskin, is he here?
Oh, here he is.
Three people died in that accident. That was a 18 wheeler?
Yeah, but that's, that's not...
So, we don't, we don't need a licensing weight stripper?
We never had a task force, but he says he's cross-trained him. ACOG's coming down right now to help us cross-train.
I understand that.
Car training all the way.
Those truck drivers know when that task force is coming. They know.
But if he's cross-training everybody, and everybody can do it, are we going to pay everybody the 36,000? So, we're going to cross-train and pay them?
Well, I haven't seen too many troopers that are just regular patrol and licensed away. I mean, if they are out there, I don't know. I've never seen one.
Go ahead.
Carl, um, there'll be a licensing away, um, Trooper Valman will be here after his six months of training.
Yeah.
He'll be there every day on the court.
He's a full time, and that's what I'm saying. Oscar Martinez is just cross-training my deputies. I mean, not just one, he's cross-training a whole handful of them.
But that was one of the deals with the waystation. They had promised us the full-time year guide. Actually, he came down, the deputy Valman did.
Yeah, he'll be here after his six months. He's just going through his MTO and his training, and he'll be here after that.
Well, you know, I, I just want to say that when I pick up the Kearns County White Paper, I would like to see, uh, not, no truck racks. I don't want them to read that. What I want to read is some narcotics officer that works for the Sheriff's Department making a big bust and putting people in jail that are doing, selling drugs. I, that's what I would like to read in the paper. So, I mean, I would...
But I don't, I don't want to take away from any deputy here, because we had, we've had deputies, and the new sheriff, we have the same thing. They're not all narcotics officers, but we've had plenty of deputies, and we've had plenty of constables, and we've had plenty of highway patrol, all assisted narcotics busts here. It wasn't just one narcotics officer.
There's a lot of people who stepped up, like Carl. There's a lot of people.
Yeah, they've all helped. They've all helped.
I mean, there's a lot of deputies. I got a deputy right now that's working.
I know, I know, on Christmas Eve night, when you guys are all there, there's constables, there's...
He's working 30,000 several seconds.
Yes. Luana, where we at? I'm hungry.
I have one thing to comment about the Roden Bridge. The only one I ask that needs a raise is the secretary, because she does my job and his job. She's working two things. All I ask is she gets raised up to $12. Or whatever y'all think is right, but she deserves a raise. She, she is doing two jobs.
What's she made now, Tracy?
I think she makes 10 something, 10, 10, 18.
I asked, I asked her to bring her up to 12 and a half. Me and Tracy talked about bringing her up to 12 and a half.
But then you're going to have every department asking for that.
Exactly.
And...
Hire her to help. That's what we're doing to every other department. Get her another girl.
Another position. She's doing good, but she's doing...
She's just doing a lot of work, and she works through them.
Have y'all noticed how many hats I have in my office?
Yeah.
Can I say something? We, we, we all appreciate what Roden Bridge does. We appreciate the employees, and we know that you want to keep them. We want, we want to keep our girls, too. And, and, you know, we'd like to be able to do that with all of our clerks as well. We'd like to offer them as, as much as we can, but we're trying to maintain, you know, equality in pay, and we know that their job is hard. We know they're out in the heat. And I think any of us would challenge any of them to come work our office for a week and see if they're not tired in a different way as well.
I understand. Didn't we put in the budget 75,000 for salaries already last year?
Looked you in charge of it.
Didn't we?
We did. It was never done. Yeah, we did.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
It just, it, it needs to be done.
We also talked about the step increase for the employees, too, last year.
I mean, because it just needs to be done. It needs to be done. It takes some time along. Where we at? And let's put that, put that back in, put that salary survey in there. If you drop it out, put it back in there.
Okay. There's still a lot of things that need to be decided. They requested increased equipment in Roden Bridge. Like I said, I don't have Roden Bridge's itemization done because I ran out of time. I don't know why I wanted to go to bed 11 o'clock last night. But anyway, so, we're nowhere near, close, or closer, but when's the next workshop going to be?
When is today?
Today is Wednesday.
Monday? Be the soonest that you could. Can you, can you recess and come back this afternoon?
Y'all want to do that?
Why don't you just do that?
No. Luana, I can post one for...
Y'all can come back.
Monday would be the soonest.
I can post one for Monday if there's nothing, I can post one for Monday.
What I would suggest doing is post one for Monday and post one for Wednesday afternoon. So, then I'll have Thursday to make whatever finalizations for approval by Friday at 5:00.
But I surely wish that we put that salary survey back in there, and somebody just look at some of this stuff.
Well, that's an easy thing. 75,000, we put it back in, but we've got things we've got to do.
You know what? That's what causes this fight every year. It's the same fight every year, and that's what causes it.
I understand, but that's just one line item. That's easy for me to put in. It's these other big ones that I got to have some decisions made on.
So...
Monday at 9:00.
Wait, we're going, hello? Yes, sir.
Budget item. I forgot about the hours on comp time. Do we need to do that on my budget? It's the 80 to 85 and a half hours?
It doesn't make a monetary difference. It would just be your policy adjustment.
You have to adjust it because it...
Do I have to get approval from y'all since it's, uh, when somebody quits, or retires, or go away?
Yeah, because we have, the problem with that was with that item was the large payouts we had for your office. Luana sent me a spreadsheet. It was almost 100,000 dollars.
Right. So, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, do y'all need to bring it up for budget here, and y'all, do y'all need to act on this since it is a budget item?
You need to amend your policy.
Okay. I got it right here. I gave, I gave a hard copy, I think, to Luana.
All right.
We good?
We're good.
All right. Thanks.
So, are we done today, Luana?
If the court adjourns, we're done today.
Okay. No one adjourns?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All in favor of that guy? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did not, come here, Mr. Blaski. I thought you were leaving.
Wait a minute.
No, no, most of the people have left.
They're not going to come back.
No, we're not going, well, I thought y'all, I thought you left with Alman and everybody else to go eat.
We should come and just finish it today. We should just come back and finish it this afternoon. There's so much to do.
Sir, but your, your comments are about budget, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Then go ahead.
Okay, Judge and Commissioners, uh, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you, and this is concerning county budget. And today, as you all know, we're sitting on a golden opportunity to do something good for Kearns County. And what I want to do is I want to go back to when I first ran for county commissioner. I had a lady ask me, she says, "Daryl, are you going to be for everybody?" And I said, "I'll tell you what I'm going to do." I says, "I'm, I'm going to be for what's good for Kearns County." Now, if it includes everybody, then yeah, I'm for everybody, but it's going to be what's good for Kearns County. Okay? Uh, when I, what I, what I would like to do is today is that you people do the same. Use the commissioners, of course, do the same. Do what's good for Kearns County. Okay? When I became commissioner in 93, our tax base was around 300 million. I don't know exact figures, 290 or 310 or something like that, but it was way down low. And, uh, our tax rate was at the maximum, almost 80 cents, a hundred dollar value. Okay? Kearns County was second or third from the Forest County and State, and, uh, it was a real hard job to try to fund everyone's budget requests. Uh, the sheriff just alluded to the fact that I was the commissioner that cut his budget during that. Well, that was because the sheriff asked for that budget, the sheriff at that time. Okay? When I retired in 2008, the tax base was around 400 million, and today, I understand, it's around 3 billion. Okay? That's, man, that's great. Our tax rate should really be low. Thank you, Eagle Ford. Uh, what I'd like to do today is urge you to, to go with, on your tax deal, go with 108 percent increase in the effective tax rate, which, or even go more if the people would not ask for a rollback allowance. I'm afraid if you go over the 108 percent, you're going to get a rollback, but make people to understand. Now, my purpose for speaking to you today is to ask you to repair the courthouse, build a new jail, and give all the county employees a substantial raise, because I know they need it. I know how the pay scales are out there, and I know they need more money. And the bottom line, and the main reason I'm here, is all of us retired county employees need a raise also on our retirement checks. Please put into your new budget funds for this, and you can do it. I think Lucy is going to lead, allude to the fact of how you can go about it. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner?
Hey, Ms. Matthews.
How are y'all today? Tired and readily, so I'll be brief.
No, your fault.
There is really a large discrepancy about how retirees are paid. I believe in 19, what was, 2006 or '07? 2006 or '07. Was it '07? Okay. The county started putting in double for retirees, whereas when myself and many other employees retired, it was only an even match. And so, we feel like now that the county is doing as well as it is, there aren't a lot of us, that maybe you could go back and give us that same benefit that you gave the retirees starting in 19, no, 2007, right? That's what we would like to ask you to do. I don't know exactly how much money that would be, but I think it would even the playing field for retirees.
Ms. Matthews, when did you retire?
In 1998. My request was that the county, at this time, the commissioners and the judge, start the same program for retirees before the decision was made in 2007, to be given the double amount put into retirement for them, instead of even the amount that has happened now. Have I made it clear?
I'm sure how that could be done.
I'm sure you can figure a way, Luana, there is no doubt in my mind.
I'll contact, I'll contact the T C D R S.
Okay.
For y'all's information.
Okay.
Retirees.
Uh-huh. They're tired. They're older.
I'm younger and I'm tired. I did approach the court about a 3 percent color raise for you.
Yes, it would.
And we agreed to that.
What are you insinuating?
Otherwise, if you can't do that, we would be happy with 100 dollars across the board, probably.
T C D R S won't do that.
Are you sure?
Luana came in here, we asked her the same thing. It's a percentage thing.
Percentage?
Okay, so now, what else, Ms. Matthews?
That's basically all we want, is just, we just want a fair shake. Um, I'm amazed, and everyone else is retired. I haven't been to a budget hearing since 1998, and I am amazed at what everyone's getting paid now. It's wonderful. I'm so happy for Kearns County, and of course, it is Eagle Ford Shell. But I believe that's all I have to say today. We just want a fair shake.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews.
Us old people. Yes, we are. So, thank y'all. Y'all are doing a great job. Appreciate it.
The next one on the agenda, again, is adjournment. Okay, so, everybody's going to, either insurance tonight, as far as, and the main thing to consider will be awarding the agent of record. Barbara, are you listening?
I'm listening, Luana.
Okay, agent of record tomorrow, and then after that, we'll have negotiation powers. I can at least have figures to budget, but we, if we award the agent of record tomorrow, then we can see what other perps might be at it. But please review y'all's stuff.
You know, this is just an example. Charlene was just saying.
I was in, I was in county politics 30 years, my husband 16, and his retirement check is...